I'll call the meeting to order, and we have the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have the roll call.
Ms. Noack. Mr. Seaward?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Good?
Here.
Ms. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
And Mr. Huffman?
Here.
Good to see everybody, and Happy New Year.
Here.
You too.
Yes. Okay, do we have any items to add or delete from the agenda? We do have one special use permit application that we'll just discuss towards the end of the meeting. Came in too late to be advertised or anything for this meeting. Okay, we have the minutes from our meeting from December fourteen. Had these for a few days to consider. Any additions or corrections?
I move except the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those a favor? Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, we don't tell anybody that signed up for the general citizen comments. Okay, so first item then to consider is election of commission officers for 2023. Chair and vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Ronnie as chair.
Are there other nominations? Steve, did we just vote on this by voice vote?
Oh, we can be official, that's not a problem.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Seaward?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
And Ms. Noack.
Yeah, there you go.
Ronnie's excited, yes. Sure you can. The president does it.
Sure, if we were going into the ballot box, we'd vote for ourselves, sure. Thank you all, and I'll do the best I can do. Vice chair.
Does Grace want to run again, or does she want to be?
Does she have to be present to accept?
She doesn't have to be present. I... Yeah, I don't know if she wants to, and she called in sick tonight, so it may be beneficial to go ahead and choose another member to be vice chair just on the off chance.
I'd like to nominate John Schaefer as vice chair.
I would second that.
Seconds.
That's the rulebook.
They don't get nominated.
You don't need to do a roll call.
Are there other nominations for vice chair? Okay, now we should do the roll call.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Noack? And Mr. Seaward?
Yes.
Now you have to put your shirt on.
That doesn't matter. You're much more capable.
We'll be in good hands if
Yes.
I'm not here. Okay, first matter we have is a public hearing, special use permit. Okay, again, this is a special use permit application to operate a bed and breakfast home at 233 Memson Lane. Tax map number is forty-two A-ten, A-one-oh-eight. It is zoned R-two, and the application comes from 124 Court Street LLC. We have the definition of a bed and breakfast home. We have the conditions that would be recommended to go along with this permit. And of course, we have all the usual, the application, notice of public hearing, tax map, picture of the home, and description. We don't tell anybody who signed up to speak on this public hearing. But I will go ahead and officially open the public hearing.
If there are any comments.
Okay, if not, then we'll close the public hearing. Is there any other information that we need?
No, sir, basically, you've covered it, they're simply looking to utilize this building as part of the Memson property for a bed and breakfast home.
Great idea, why not add to your portfolio?
It's always interesting to note that this particular house was built in eighteen ninety-three. Consists of twelve rooms.
Four bedrooms, two full baths, one half bath. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the planning commission recommend approval of the request for a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast home at 233 Memson Lane, tax map number forty-two A-ten, A-one-oh-eight, in the medium-density residential R-two district from 124 Court Street LLC to the town council with specific conditions as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Good?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Noack? Mr. Seaward? And Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
It'll be going to the town council at the next meeting.
I think it was mentioned this would add to the portfolio at the Memson. So now they have the hotel rooms and the cabins and the bed and breakfast.
And the big cottages.
The house, they have it, big house, yes.
What else do you want to buy?
Blue House has approached us this time.
Oh, really, right?
Really?
It's at that state now that if we buy it, it's just going to come right down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, they approached us last year.
It would make a good piece of progress.
It would, it would.
Beautiful home.
Yeah, it is.
All right, then we have some items for updates and discussions. The first one being the noise ordinance. We were asked to look at a code amendment to section D of chapter fifty-eight-five concerning loud, disturbing, and unreasonable noise. And this would specifically relate to the problem of noise from vehicles. The council asked us to consider this, and we have the rewriting from the town attorney. It effectively rewrites section fifty-eight-five. We've had this to look at before, and we've had some discussion. Any further discussions this time?
When it says noise means sound of any kind, I mean, that seems like a broad definition.
Well, I think it is just that noise is any audible occurrence. It's only when it gets into loud and disturbing that we have to get into more of a definition, and I think that's where the town attorney was came up with additional language to make it simplified for our police officers to enforce.
Well, I would think it would do the opposite of that, it seems very broad to just say noise of any kind.
Well, but it's noise of any kind, but when you get into the noises that are, that they can do enforcement of, that's where the code becomes a little more specific of what qualifies as a noise that is disturbing. Yep.
I mean, sporadic noise is five seconds, is that?
I believe that's the definition, and sporadic noises are exempted. So, you could go out and
Do something for five seconds.
Yeah, scream, you know, happy birthday, something like that. However, if it became repetitive, that's where law enforcement would be able to then go to the next definition.
So, you know, I still go back to when it was first presented to us, and it sounded like there was, there was one complaint. And that we're, we're changing all the code and amendment for one complaint. Is there any expansion on that?
Well, there were, there was actually multiple complaints that went in. But what you're seeing in this section of code, well, council had referred a zoning consideration to the planning commission, and then we talked with council, there was a concern about just how it would impact neighborhoods and things like that. That's when the, the town attorney looked to a non-zoning section where we already had a section fifty-eight-five about loud noises. A number of the changes that he is looking, or he is proposing specifically don't relate to the initial complaint, they're simply updating to meet with more current legal definitions. So, a lot of what you're seeing isn't specific to the original complaint. However, the updates to this, specific to motor vehicles, would then allow our officers, should a complaint come in about a vehicle that's running continuously, running repetitively in the night hours, that is something that they could then enforce.
If the Public Works needs to go out and fix something at midnight, is that a problem?
No. Yeah, there is an exemption for it.
Exception.
Yep. Item, was it D, two D, list a number of exceptions to sporadic noise, repair the public facilities, sound necessary to health, self, health, safety, and welfare, police fire, emergency response, fire and, fire alarms and things of that nature, lawful parades, firework displays, or other public activities, a football game at the school, public speaking or assembly lawfully conducted on, on public property, things of that nature, locomotives, you know, we can't stop a train to
And this is all between ten PM and six AM?
For the excessive, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I doubt we're having many lawful parades between ten PM and six AM.
Okay, other questions or discussion?
I get it, but I'm just, you know, we're talking about like fireworks and explosives, demolition, excavation, and we're comparing that with idling. You know, just in this, as far as vehicles, and I understand idling for a commercial vehicle may, is slightly different from idling from a car, just comment that it just seems like they're all grouped into the same subcategory and, or same category. Seems like pneumatic hammers versus idling, it seems a bit at work, but.
Well, again, the, the, this chapter of the code is, covers all types of noises, so you are correct, there's, you know, it, it, it covers the gambit from, from pets to construction activities, so. But it does that so that our officers have simply one location in the code to cite if there is a violation.
What is, if they did cite someone, what is that? Is it a fine, or is it?
There is a fine, section E has the punishment that violation of the section would be a class three misdemeanor. And then if there's repetitive citations within a twelve, a twelve-month period, it goes up to a class two and then potentially a class one.
So, going back to the motor vehicle and the concern, like at Contours and, and the trucks there, what's in that to protect those? What's written in here to, so that we're not?
Contour isn't adjacent to any residentially zoned properties, they've got the cemetery behind them, I guess they do have the townhomes on the other side. They're, they're subject to the same noise regulations in the evening hours that if they, if they do have to operate, they need to do it in a, as quiet manner as they can. And to my knowledge, we've not had any, any noise complaints from Contour.
Could we table this to think about it a little bit longer?
You can, again, a lot of what came out of this, the, the town attorney feels is appropriate and necessary, just as an update to the existing code. I don't know that his recommendation would be any different, but if, if the commission does wish to think about it and provide any concerns, we can definitely do that.
Let's go to the town council and let them figure it out.
We, we would need to have a public hearing, wouldn't we?
No, this, since this is not a zoning update, what, the, the reason that it's on your agenda is because the council referred a zoning amendment to the planning commission, and then in the course of arriving at what the commission would feel is the most appropriate change, would be a change to the code that is technically outside your purview, but it relates to the matter that was referred to you. So, this is simply just a, a vote of, you know, the commission recommends council's consideration of changes to the existing noise code rather than an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Is meowing's really a word, isn't that supposed to be mewing? Cat mew. But meowing?
Details, details.
Meowing's, I'm not just saying, never, never kind of seen that word, meowing's.
I don't know, I assume it, well, I, I can tell you that it did make it through Microsoft's Word spell check. Now, it may not be the correct word, but at least it, it does exist in somebody's dictionary.
Okay, are we ready to send this on to council, or should we look at it again next month?
I'll go ahead and move the planning commission recommend the consideration of the proposed code amendment, chapter fifty-eight-five, loud, disturbing, and unreasonable noises to the town council as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Okay, Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Noack? Mr. Seaward?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
And Mr. Good?
Yes.
Okay, the next item to discuss is a request from Ramsey Incorporated to rezone parcels forty-two A sixteen, one, one through fourteen, which were recently bound, boundary line adjusted into the town limits as low-density R-one. And they are requesting that this be rezoned to R-three. And I believe we have a note there that it says parcels one through fourteen, but at the time this was written, it says that nine and twelve were not owned, are not owned by Ramsey Incorporated.
We have since discovered that lot nine is owned by Mr. Ramsey, but lot twelve is not, so the, the formal request will be for thirteen of the lots.
What's the purpose of there?
Well, when Mr. Ramsey originally approached the town for consideration of being boundary line adjusted into the town, it was with the intent to rezone to R-three. And that was actually specified in the BLA agreement between Mr. Ramsey and the town and the county, was that as soon as the BLA was approved by the courts, he would then submit the rezoning to bring this to R-three. The original intent by Mr. Ramsey was so that he would have the option to do duplexes in this area. I don't know if he will proceed with duplexes, he's having success selling single-family homes, but it gives him the option, should he choose, to do duplexes in the area.
Okay, other questions or discussion? So, is the surrounding property zoned R-one?
The properties that currently are in the town here, I believe, are R-two. And then the other properties around it are in the county, either agriculture or residential, which is more encompassing than the town R-one.
Would they all be on town water?
Yes, ma'am, that was also part of the intent of his annotation, was for the reduced utility connection fees, so yes, ma'am, they will all be connected.
Seems like such a single-family kind of neighborhood out there to me.
Yes, but the, the understanding of the town when he, when we went through this process was for him to have the flexibility of doing duplexes, and
And why wasn't that? Explain it to me again, why wasn't that done at that time?
Because when the town does a BLA with the county, the property historically comes in at the highest zoning classification, which is R-one. And then it, the, the applicant then can proceed with pursuing a more dense zoning classification. And it had been his intent all along to, to go to the R-three. It's just process-wise, we typically don't want to go straight to a more dense. It would complicate the, the boundary line adjustment application and consideration if we went to something a little more dense than usual.
So, you wouldn't have done it if it came in at R-three, so why would we do it now? It's kind of, do you know what I'm saying? Do you see the logic there?
Yes and no. It, it, it simply sets a, historically, every property that comes into the town from the county is brought in at an R-one designation, regardless of the, the known or intended development plan. Going through the rezoning process gives the town the ability, should there be any stipulations or concerns or profit requirement, profit requirements, if, if the, the denser zoning classification would cause either impact to roads, water, sewer, the rezoning process gives the town the ability to alert the applicant of those concerns so that they can then put forth a proffer of any mitigation that would be appropriate.
Do you know which of the, any of these lots are not currently sold, correct?
Well, that's what kind of complicated. Lot twelve has been sold. That's why Mr. Ramsey is no longer the owner of it. We understand that he has options to sell a few of the other lots. However, the lots that he intended to sell.
I guess if you've got one in there thinking it's R-one and then suddenly you move the goalpost, I don't really.
The owners should have been made aware of the pending BLA by Mr. Ramsey when he did transfer the property. So they should have been aware of his intent to go to the R-three. And the owner of lot twelve has been informed that they can pursue R-three. It's just that since Mr. Ramsey no longer has a property interest, he can't put forth the application for them.
That's complicated.
It is. Unfortunately, thankfully, the housing market in Loray is fairly robust and there is a strong desire of people to purchase lots. It unfortunately simply complicated the BLA and rezoning of these lots.
These were the only fourteen lots that were taken into the town?
Yes, sir. Yeah, about five point three or five point six, they.
I think it's something the town needs and will need more so as we move into the future.
I'm sorry?
I mean, I think growth is one of the things that we need to accommodate to continue to be a viable community. And even though there's, you know, a little, some concerns here, I think I would be for it.
I agree with that, but you're, look at that neighborhood and think about putting up duplexes out there. It changes the character of that side of town that it hasn't had before.
Other questions or discussion at this time?
We will advertise this for a public hearing at your February meeting.
Okay, next item for discussion is an application for a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast home at sixteen Eden Road. Tax map number forty-two A thirteen, A nineteen. This is in R-two. And we have the definition for a bed and breakfast home. We have the conditions that would be applied if this were to be approved. Again, we have the, as usual, we have the tax map information and the application for the special use permit. And I think we received this evening here at our places, a layout of the house. Showing two bedrooms, three, well, potentially three bedrooms. Right?
Yeah.
It's incorrect in the GIS.
Oh, okay. It does have, does have a lot of property around it. Other information?
No, sir. You've received all of the information that we have.
And I'm available for questioning.
I did have a question. In our information, it says, and the application says to be used as a bed and breakfast home. But then in your letter, it says would be used as a short-term rental. Something like BRBO.
So I don't feel like we meet the complete definition of a bed and breakfast. It's primarily our secondary residence and we want to be able to make it available for rental in town. Virginia Beach defines that as home share, in which it would be a hybrid version of short-term rental and home share. So I just wanted to convey that. And if we need to leave granola bars and a dish on the counter, I'm happy to do that.
Will you have someone here to manage it while you're gone?
Yes, I do. My brother lives literally a mile and a half up the road. And the fire chief who lives right across the street is also, keeps a watchful eye on him. And he is completely on board with this.
I'm sure this is something I should know. I'm sure we allow bed and breakfast in R-two. As I know, we expanded the definition a few years ago. But do we allow short-term rentals in R-two?
Not a lodging house, no, sir.
That's what I thought when I looked at this. So I guess, I guess my problem is, like you just mentioned, it may not specifically meet the definition for bed and breakfast, especially since you live in Virginia Beach. And then we can't allow a short-term rental or lodging house because it's zoned R-two. So I don't know. How could we do this?
Technically, it doesn't qualify as a, without the owner occupancy during. And that's where if Mr. Bailey could confirm that his brother would actually stay on-site during a rental, that would then qualify as the bed and breakfast home. It's not necessarily that they provide breakfast to the folks staying there. It's just that there is a property manager on-site during the stay.
Yes.
I know back years ago, when the bed and breakfast part was added to the code, there was a requirement that the owner or someone designated by the owner had to be there. And I know in the bed and breakfast that I've stayed in, or my wife and I've stayed in, there has been somebody on-site to sign us in and to prepare breakfast and do that the next morning.
It is the on-site. Our code doesn't require the breakfast as much as it does require the on-site occupancy of the owner or representative.
As I say, when I looked at this, I thought, well, it doesn't seem to compute. One or the other.
And that is where, under the. Yeah, we would have to include as one of the recommended conditions, the on-site representative during the stay.
Is that something that you think would be possible?
Absolutely.
I guess that would be like condition number eight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, other questions or discussion? Okay, I guess then with those conditions, then it could be advertised for a public hearing for next month?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, and, well, shall we take a moment just to look at this?
Yes, sir. At your seats, there is a request from the Griffiths at eight hundred Massanutten Avenue. They have a building that they had converted to a three-business structure. They are now seeking to do conversion of that property into three apartments. They are in the process of providing a general layout of each of the units. They, they're, they plan to have it be uniformed, so they'll be getting that to us. But as it's in the business district, it does require a special use permit for apartments.
As you mentioned, this is, this is on B-one. I remember we did look at this a few years ago. I believe it started out as a garage. And then we went and looked at it because they did want to make it into office spaces. Did a lot of work to improve the building. I go by there all the time, so I know it had a lot of improvements done to it. And now they're asking again for three apartments. Three two-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. Any other discussion on this at this time?
They have, should have enough space on-site for, they don't have it yet, but it's, there's space for it.
How many parking spaces would they need?
Six.
Other updates? One thing I had thought about, I know at the council meeting, and at some of our meetings too, there's been discussion about the number of lodging houses and bed and breakfasts and so on. Could we get a list of the bed and breakfast and the lodging houses with the addresses and so on? Because it seems like we've had a number of these, and it may be that we've just had a number of them lately. I think maybe we mentioned that if we look in total, there might be twenty or so lodging houses out of what, about two thousand housing units? Pretty small percentage. But again, I know it does seem like there's been a number of these and it might just be because of the economy or because of the way the traveling public is looking at lodging places these days. But I just thought it would be helpful if we could have a list of those bed and breakfasts and the lodging houses. Maybe even see them on a map, so we'll just have a good idea of what all we're talking about.
I've often wondered what percentage it was.
Well, well, we would only know the ones that collect the taxes and.
Property channels. We can definitely work on getting that list for you, yes, sir.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful.
Just to get a picture, because again, it just seems like there's been so many. It's probably just because it's been so many lately, the last year or so. Okay, other updates?
Just a request that at your seats is the disclosure forms. If y'all could complete that and return it to Danielle or to me, will make you legitimate within the eyes of the Commonwealth.
It looks like our February meeting is pretty late in the month, February fifteenth, if I'm looking at that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Any updates on any projects? I know Brian's here, any updates?
Memorial Drive is probably going to be, we may run out of decent weather for hot mixed asphalt, so that second lane may get stitched up and just have to wait until about end of March. So there may be a sixty-day window here where, gee, guys doing very little, you know, Memorial Drive, they're going to work fairly diligently through this month to try to get curb and gutter sidewalk in. However, we had a progress meeting this morning. If temperatures allow and if a hot mixed plant is available, such as the one in Stroelsburg, they are willing to put down base asphalt and suspend sidewalk activities until they can get, so if they have the opportunity to put down their base asphalt on that second lane before leaving the job site for a few months, they definitely will try to do that. So they're gonna, they're definitely going to pursue the work. Right now, they're about sixty days ahead of schedule. They're going to lose a period of time, you know, just due to weather and not being able to get asphalt. But their standard completion date, I think, is fifth of June. So if all they're doing is waiting on asphalt and line marking, they'll be done fairly quickly. Streetlights won't go up for a while. The power company has to get those ordered and received. We do have existing streetlights there that will leave in the end. And then the rounded-out project was completed by BDOT and closed out. And the pump station at Luray Landing progresses. They've done quite a bit of work this winter and are going to try to keep working on that project. They may get a sixty-day shutdown too in February and March just due to lack of materials. But the wet well's in, twenty-six and a half feet deep, and the building footers are in. Building should go in, the foundation building should go in. And then we're promised pumps in May. We'll see if we actually get them in May. We're not holding. And the pedestrian, I have a kickoff meeting with BDOT for the pedestrian trail. The extensions, we had looked at this back when we did the comp plan, if you remember. Phase one extends from First Street out along Loray Avenue to the Red Park. Phase two is Third Avenue, or Third Street from Loray all the way to the East Luray Shopping Center. And then phase three would be Ninth, Ninth Street would be from Third to Village Place. We get a lot of requests for pedestrian access from, through the Village Place. And so planning the meeting for that, it's going to kick off, the zoning thing is coming two weeks from now. And then hopefully we can put together a decent application to compete for transportation alternative funds in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five cycle. And at least get one of those phases constructed. I sent out ladders, letters to all the adjacent property owners for their planned routes, and I've gotten two responses. So out of eighty-seven. But again, it's all built in within the town right away and we're going to definitely try to make things nice for property owners. But it will have to be a ten-foot wide trail, five foot off of the existing roadway. And we're qualified for federal funds, I think, so we are pursuing that. Hopefully we'll have good luck. And we're qualified for federal funds, I think, so we are pursuing that. Hopefully we'll have good luck.
Okay, any other items to bring up or discussion? Okay, we've, if not, we've completed our agenda and then some. And we'll be back on February fifteenth. About the meeting's adjourned.